Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Penfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight's meeting is being video recorded and is also being broadcast live on the Town of Penfield's website, Penfield.org, also on the Town of Penfield's Government Access Channel 1303, and on streaming media devices Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire. You can search Penfield TV in your device's app store, and you should know it is free. If you would like to address the board on any public hearing matter tonight, there will be a specific public participation opportunities for each matter after the board responds to the applicant's presentation with its questions and concerns. Anyone that is viewing the public hearing remotely and wishes to address the board can do so by calling 340-8771 or by submitting a comment or question also through the website, Each meeting, well, tonight's meeting will start actually with our work session, so we'll tend to business from last meeting. We have a couple tabled matters. And then we will ask the applicants, go right into our public hearings tonight, we'll ask the applicants probably to come up to this table tonight, I guess, maybe that one, we'll see how it goes. And then just give us name and address. And then the board member that is the lead board member on the application will walk the applicant through the process. We think that works pretty efficiently because everyone submitted a good detailed written application which we've all reviewed, and it makes it a little bit smoother, let's say, if we can walk you through it. When the, each applicant is done, then we'll move right into its consideration, most likely. We do like to point out every meeting that we think the town does a good job of making sure that citizens are aware of what items are going to be heard, so that they can come in and comment on them if they choose to do so, or comment in the other manners that we've described. Town does this by sending postcards to people who reside within a certain number of feet or certain distance of the subject property. The town also posts its, the agenda on the website. I think they still post it here on the bulletin board. And perhaps most visible is the signs town makes folks put up on the property, so you drive by and you see it, and if you're curious enough, so to speak, you can call up and find out what's happening with the property. And folks do that occasionally. So with that being said, I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. Thanks, everyone. And I think we have the minutes from last meeting that were sent out, so we've had a chance to review those. May I have a motion on those?
Motion to approve is written.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And the first tabled application is Penfield Road. I think we have all the parties here and council. We're good on that? All right. Come on up. So my understanding on this matter is that it is going to be tabled again. And the reason for that is the board did receive today a consultant report that we requested, but I know, for one, I didn't, I didn't have a chance to review it myself other than a cursory look. And what we thought we would like to do is, again, table it, because the report, from my quick view, did make recommendations that the applicant submit some further materials. So my thought, and we can certainly talk about it, would be that we table it, give the applicant an opportunity to review the report as well, of course, submit the additional material requested, or give a reason why you can't or won't, I hope not, but okay. And then give our consultant another chance to review that, perhaps finalize the report, and then give the board sufficient time to review that, even perhaps through the, a special meeting, perhaps a special meeting to do that. So, that being said, I wonder, have you had a chance to review the report, Mr. Lusk? I don't want to...
I'm not sure.
I think it's on by default.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Chair, I have had the opportunity to review it. There's a lot of information there, and obviously we'd like the opportunity to respond to that.
So how long do you think that'll take you?
Well, I did have a brief discussion with Mr. Mancuso...
Oh, okay.
About that, but didn't yet have the opportunity to talk to our clients before I arrived just now. So we were in the hallway. Unfortunately for everyone, 4th of July holiday is coming, and then summer holiday breaks.
Why is that unfortunate?
Well, it's good. In terms of timing of submissions, that's unfortunate. It's unfortunate for the rest of us, right?
From your perspective.
Yes, yes. But can we confirm when the next ZBA meeting is?
The next regularly scheduled meeting, I believe, is July 21st.
All right. And to give everyone an opportunity to review that, if we were to submit responses to that information by, again, 7:14, does that, a week, does that give everybody enough time to review?
As, as long as our consultant has had enough time to, that's enough time for you to act? You want to come on up? I got two thumbs up. First time that's happened in my life.
We're both here.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm William Johnson.
Okay. Nice to meet you.
And my colleague and Professor Stephen Chikarola.
Great, great. Thanks for being here. Okay. So if they supply their supplemental material by the 14th, when do you think you'd have a chance to review that and amend your report at all?
I would say within one week.
Okay.
I would say within one week, which would then give the board time to look at our report and go to the next meeting, July 21st.
Okay.
I'd say we would need time between...
Yeah.
Their response to see it.
So, well, let's target those dates, if that's okay. And then we can, I guess, probably looking at a special meeting sometime subsequent to receipt of your final report, to come in and ask you questions about that and have the applicant also given opportunity.
Can I make one question suggestion?
Sure.
Would you be able to perhaps get it in by the 11th and then by the 18th, which would allow...
Well, so, good point. What I'm, what I'm hearing is one week.
One week, yeah.
Delta. So the sooner you get it in, the sooner you can review, the sooner we can...
Is that three days a problem?
Let me just ask the person that's got to spend three days doing the...
Yeah, that's going to do it.
He's not a public hearing.
Look at that.
July 11th, he's nodding, for the record, just so he doesn't come after me later. The client has nodded yes. So 7/11 for a 7/18 return in a few days to be able to do it from you. That, that works from our perspective.
That works for us as well.
Excellent. All right.
All right.
So then, go ahead. Do you have...
I do know that following that 7/21 meeting, the summer vacation schedule becomes a problem, particularly for the gentleman that's going to answer the question, so that we could be in, and we recognize with the shot clock that may have impacts. But hopefully for the 7/21 meeting, that information will be answered again. But if we get into the August, we may have to deal with that at 7/21 if the ZBA has additional comments.
Yeah. This is an important, they all are important, but this is an important application, and I'm sure we'll be as flexible as we can with our schedules to come in, again, even if we need a special meeting or two on this.
Okay, perfect.
All right. Makes sense? All right, then, given all this, I'm going to make a motion to table for these reasons.
Second.
And any further discussion? All right.
I have one additional, and you could probably adopt this post-tableing, but the planning board did adopt a resolution to extend the shot clock with respect to their applications to August 12th. I would just recommend the zoning board adopt a similar resolution on agreement of the applicant to extend the shot clock to August 12th, 2022.
All right. I'll just make, I'll amend my motion to include that provision as well.
And I will second, again.
All right. Great. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, have a good holiday, despite what Mr. Lusk says.
Thank you, Mr. Lusk.
Appreciate it.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you. Mr. Lusk, you're already dressed for the holiday.
Oh, listen. You're behind the eight ball there. I've heard it already. But thank you. Boy, brave man before we vote. All right. The second tabled application. And...
All right. Have a good night.
Everyone have a good holiday.
Take care. Thanks for coming in again. All right. On this application, I think we tabled it to clarify some of the procedural items that we had, and I believe we've done that. I know we've done that. But I also believe that in the interim, the planning board took action and approved the application. Okay. Everybody aware of that?
Yes.
Okay. Great. So I personally am ready to move forward with the application. I know you were lead on it, so I will defer to you. Did we do seeker on this?
I don't believe so.
We haven't done seeker, but I know we've started to ask questions from last time those carry over, or should I?
Yeah. Well, no, I, I don't, I don't know if we left open the public hearing. It's been, it's been seemingly a while.
I don't think we did.
No. No. So we're actually ready to proceed with seeker then, I guess. I don't, I just don't remember if this was classified as a type 2.
It is a type 2 action.
Okay. Is that your motion to declare a type 2 action?
Yes. I make a motion to declare a type 2 action pursuant to seeker.
I will second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now on the merits of the application.
So this is, again, to, specifically related to the pre-existing shed, we're calling it a shed, on the property. I would have a motion to approve the request based on, you know, the, this really, it was a pre-existing, it had nothing to do with the property previous to this. There's no change in the character or the neighborhood as a result of, of continuing to have this shed here. The only feasible remedy was to demolish it, and that doesn't seem like appropriate in this situation. The variance seems reasonably to be requested. So based on these, I would motion to approve the request.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? All right. I would just note, appreciate the applicant's patience, and I, for one, I'm glad property's being put to what I think is a good use for the entire community, so.
Thank you.
Little bit of editorial comment there. All right. No further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. So as far as tonight's application go, I can just ask, does anybody have a question for clarification on any of them?
No.
Rather than run through them? Okay. Well, great. Let's then proceed. Did I miss anything? Not yet. Okay. Let's, let's go with application number one.
Joseph Scofarro, 1402 Salt Road, Webster, New York, 14580. Requests approval for area variances under Section 250-14.3 of the code...
Doesn't matter, she said.
...to allow a second accessory storage building, whereas a maximum of one accessory storage building is permitted under Section 250-5.1-D4 of the code that is also larger than allowed under Section 250-5.1-F12A of the code at 1402 Salt Road. Property is currently or formerly owned by Joseph and Kimberly Scofarro and is owned RA-2. SBL number 096.03-1-69.21. This is application number 22Z-0017.
Okay. Again, if we could have your name and address, and then George will walk you through the application.
Joe Scofarro, 1402 Salt Road, in Penn Webster.
Great. So appreciate the completeness of the, of the submissions. Makes it a lot easier to have the discussion. So did you have a couple of questions?
Sure.
So I do know that your, the variance is basically to add the second building.
Correct.
And the second building is slightly larger than what is...
It is.
...permissible. So technically, there's two variances there, both for the second building and the...
Yes.
...size variance. Can you tell to me a little bit about how the second building will be used and why you'd need it?
Just, just storage.
Okay.
Storage, I got emotional when we did the subdivision. My parents owned on the corner, Salt and Plank, and we had that barn for, for over 60 years, and I had a lot of stuff stored in that barn, and we sold the property last year, and I just need some storage. Cars, boat, ATVs, snowmobiles, I just need some more storage. So it's just going to be strictly storage. That's, that's about it, you know?
Gotcha. And is there any way that you could, could modify the structure to get it under the square footage?
We, we laid out everything that we own. We have a ski boat, we have a snowmobile trailer, we have ATVs, I have two classic cars, and that seemed to fit in the area, and plus a tractor. So, so that seemed to fit within that size that we needed. We, we put everything out in the field and measured around it without having to be door dings and whatnot, you know? So that, that kind of is what we needed. And plus, the, the way the size is, there'd be no material waste. It's an even size.
No, that makes sense. And, you know, the properties that are surrounding that, I did take a drive out there, so I noted there are other properties there that have more than one...
Yeah, there's quite a few.
...storage building there. So it would be...
This current map, though, my, my property is now larger than what this map shows. I have increased my property by three quarters of an acre, which is behind 1404 Salt Road, and I also own the two acres to the north, and I also own the 9.7 of the farmland behind there too now, so. So I do, if that map doesn't show it. I guess some paperwork was not submitted properly by the attorneys.
Maybe you don't own it then, huh?
No, it's still in my name, my mom's name. But that's been all taken care of recently, so.
Excellent. And have you had an opportunity to talk to any of the neighbors around?
I did. I know, well, the, the two neighbors that are joining me on each side, the new owners of 1623 Plank Road and 1404, they never received the card, but they, I know they did both call.
Yeah, I did have the notation that you had.
Yeah.
So obviously, you've talked to the neighbors. There's no issues for...
Yes. I learned it on the last time. We, we had this barn approved to be put on a 1623 Plank Road property a little over a year ago, and I didn't talk to anybody prior to coming in, so you guys tabled it for a month. But then we retracted that because my mom decided to sell the property, and we're going to do the subdivision. So I did retract that permit on that barn, and now that's why I'm, I'm here again.
Yeah, I did, I did note that they, they'd already approved an oversized.
Correct.
Yep. Excellent. So those were the questions I had. If anybody else on the board had questions?
Because one thing sticks out is, how come two? Why not, you know, because this, you're looking for a second accessory structure, why not expand an existing...
We, we thought about that, but because of the where it is, and I would have to come in here and, and ask for a setback also. So this barn that I'm building here, I did, I brought it in, so I wouldn't have to ask for a setback.
Okay.
So I just thought it would be easier. And plus, the location in front of those pine trees, you know, I'll still be able to see out back still, you know? If we think about putting it there, we, we laid out a million different scenarios, and we just, because we now, we own the, the farmland, we, we didn't want to block the view out back there, so.
Okay. Any other board questions?
No.
All right. I don't see any electronic comments, and I don't believe anybody's waiting on the phone, so I'll ask anybody in the audience if he or she would like to come up and comment on this application. No? Okay. Well, then, let's move to the seeker.
So in regards to seeker, I would move to make this a type 2, requiring no further review.
Second.
Okay. We have George, and then second by Matt. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On the merits?
Well, this is already pre-approved for the second building, so he's not asking for anything that the board hadn't already approved. He was able to relocate it to eliminate the, the need for the, the additional variance. It wouldn't be out of character for the neighborhood, and it would provide him with the additional storage that he needs, as he explained to us with the plethora of going from a barn and relocating. It's a lot of stuff. Actually, I wanted to ask him about the classic cars, but I figured it was the wrong venue.
68 Mustang.
Excellent.
And a 15 Mustang.
Awesome. Based on, on that, I would, I would certainly recommend approval.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to approve for the reasons stated, and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good luck.
Thank you a second time.
You're welcome. This meeting has started off with a bang, and may we have the second application?
Oh, so funny.
Believe me, that's funny, that's funny, folks. You'll know in a minute. Andy didn't like that one. Hey, you came to the meeting, you didn't have to come to the meeting. You know how these go.
Andy, take it away.
Keystone Novelties Distributors LLC, 531 North Fourth Street, Denver, Pennsylvania, 17517, requests a recommendation of approval for the issuance of an itinerant vendor license under Section 162-6-E1B and Section 162-E2 of the code to allow the sales of sparkling devices at 1601 Penfield Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Penfield TK Owner LLC and its own general business. SBL number 138.08-1-2.PLZA. This is application 22Z-0029.
All right. Anybody here on that application?
Yes. Yes, sir, I am.
Okay.
My name is Rick Siri.
We're calling you up.
Excuse me?
Up there you are. Now we can see you.
Okay.
All right. Go ahead and give us your name and address, and then we'll walk you through it.
Okay. My name is Rick Siri. I'm a director retail operations for Keystone Novelties. We do Keystone fireworks tents up and down the East Coast. Company's located 531 North Fourth Street in Denver, PA. And here, we, we were at this location in 2020, if my records are right.
Okay. Go ahead there, Laura.
Yes, Rick. So nice to meet you. Thank you. Application is extremely thorough. I appreciate you kind of taking the time to submit all of the additional and supplemental paperwork as well. You mentioned that you were at the site in 2020, so you took a year off for '21 and coming back this year?
Yeah. I mean, I wanted to come back. I, given the broker that we use for this particular, you know, landlord or property owner, they said that we were outbid by TNT. I don't know if that's true or not. So I do know, I think the area that we sat in when we were here in 2020 is being developed or, you know, something like that. So it wasn't offered to us, or we didn't get the bid, and that's why we didn't come back.
Okay. Well, with that, it looks like you're looking to set up at the 22nd of this month, tear down July 5th, actually closer to July 10th, and your planned hours of operation, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM daily. Is that still all accurate?
Yeah, that's all accurate. The 22nd is the earliest date we would open for the sale. You know, we are, I think, scheduled to deliver the product on the 23rd at the moment. So when we filled out the application, the 22nd was the earliest date that any of our tents were open, so we put that in there. And the tents have to go up, you know, a day or two before, and the site is cleaned up, you know, room swept and trash and debris removed on the 6th. We have to give the equipment guys, Boardageon and tent companies, you know, a couple days of flexibility, because we're certainly not their only clients at that time of year, you know, to remove the rest of it. But we, we guarantee that the, that everything is removed by the 10th, so.
Okay. Is the 22nd the right date to set this for, or do you need something a little bit earlier than the 22nd to set up the tent?
No, I don't need anything earlier.
Okay.
We would not start any earlier than that. I just, I was clarifying that the sale might not start until the 23rd. That's currently when the product's scheduled to be there, and, you know, so that impacts inspections. But yeah, we would not start any sooner than the 22nd.
Got it. Okay. And then as far as, obviously, we're dealing with fireworks and sparklers, the fire marshal and the appropriate permits, have you received all of that? And is there any additional follow-up?
Yes. Yeah, we have our state's sparkler license, both our wholesale and our site-specific one for this location. The fire marshals, state fire marshals then come and inspect us for, you know, making sure that we're, you know, only have the products that are legal in, in New York to sell, which are still technically fireworks. They are classified by the American Pirate Association, Pirate Techniques Association as ground-based fountains, handheld sparklers, and novelties. And basically, that means nothing that explodes, nothing that shoots through the air, that showers and sparks, it might crack and won't pop, but, you know, there should be nothing that, you know, explodes, no roman candles, no mortars, no fire wreckers, no, you know, nothing like that. Those are the classification of consumer-grade fireworks that are legal to sell in New York are those ground-based fountains, handheld sparklers, and novelties.
Okay.
And so, as I say, I have those permits. We're, of course, applying for, you know, what's required here as a hearing, and then any building permits. I always like to make the distinction, and I don't know if you guys have been through it enough, you know, the last couple of years, you know, that the state, in New York, the state takes on the responsibility, making sure, you know, that we're only selling what we're supposed to in, in the, in the tents, and that the tents are set up according to the NFPA 1124, which is the portion of the, I don't know if it's called the fire code anymore, but the, the portion of that, that most, you know, that regulates most of what we do with a temporary structure, you know, having, having exit signs, flame retardant on the tent, the flame retardant certificate that guarantees that it was manufactured that way, and the exit signs, the, you know, that the egresses are wide enough, you know, the tent's set up appropriate for its use. So they, they have some very specific requirements. We do our best to follow them, and, and they come, they come around and inspect us randomly, and sometimes more once if they feel necessary.
Well, it sounds like you guys have really thought up through, obviously, it's a dangerous product, but the, the safety measures are in place, and it's not only just from you, but also regulated by the state. As far as this is the second time that you'll be at the site, have you spoke to any of the neighboring businesses? Were there any previous complaints that you're aware of from being set up at this location?
I'm unaware of any previous complaints, like I said, even from the owner or, you know, or anything. I've gotten none. I, I have not spoken to any of the neighboring businesses. My contact is usually pretty much limited to the landlords and their representatives in the lease negotiations. And then, you know, we try to be good neighbors and, and, you know, follow the codes, be compliant, and work with the jurisdictions. So I did not hear of any complaints. That was, nothing like that was suggested as the reason that we were not, you know, able to return in 2021. So that's, that's all the information I have that way.
Okay. And I think this is the same site that we did the flowers recently, and there was no was no issues with traffic or anything like that.
I would like to weigh in here on that, is that we are renting the tent from the flower, I guess it's a flower tent, it's, I forget her name, she flowers, I can't remember, I apologize, but yeah, she was originally supposed to be here and then we were just going to move into her tent, which we do that quite a bit in Pennsylvania. You know, it's just our season lines up with the end of their season and, so we had talked to her, we have another location in Canadavia, which we are going to do, we are doing the same thing. Unfortunately for her, I guess, she had some issues with getting in enough plants or finding help, I'm not sure which one, I guess she didn't set up, but we're using her tent and setting up in the same spot, from what I understand.
Okay. I didn't have any other questions?
Okay, any other questions from the board?
I have just one, one quick question. Is any, anything from a standpoint of light, additional lighting or noise or anything that would be out of character for that area?
Well, I can weigh in on that, we don't have any external lights, like, the most we've ever done, I don't think we have any scheduled for this, would be some string lights that go around, you know, the tent. We have halogen lights in the tent, or LED lights, we've been switching over to those, you know, for lighting for the few hours that they operate in the dark, or when it's, as it's getting dark at dusk. But we don't have any lights shining out, we don't have, you know, anything like that. And of course, you guys regulate the signage, and so we have just the banners attached to the tent. And as far as our clerks go, they are, you know, always bound and we know that they can have a radio, but it needs to be quiet enough that people can be in the tent and be having a conversation, you know, so we, we wouldn't expect that, if our tent sale was run the way we instructed, that there would be, you know, any noise or anything like that.
Okay, I'll ask anyone in the audience if they would like to speak about this. All right, once again, no comments on the phone or website, so let's proceed with the seeker.
This is, I would motion that this is a type 2 action pursuant to seeker.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion on seeker? All those in favor?
Aye.
And on the merits?
I would request that we move forward with approving based on, you know, they've taken all of the safety measures that you can take, receiving the fire marshal's certificate, having it properly designated for the fire extinguishers, et cetera. I would also suggest that the hours of operation are reasonable for that area, there's plenty of parking and traffic, shouldn't be an issue. I would also just any of the other conditions from the previous 2020 approval, I would just make sure that those were consistent.
I'll second.
Good catch, all right, so a motion to approve for those reasons and with those conditions in a second by Andres. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck.
Well, thank you very much, and we'll, I guess, I'm not sure if there are additional permits we need to speak to, but I'm sure we'll end up talking to the building code people, so that, I'll move forward with that to try and, you know, get ahead of it. Next week comes up quick.
Yeah, okay, well, thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Number three.
Roger DeLong, 1720 Creek Street, Rochester, New York, 14625. Requests approval for area variances under section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a larger accessory storage building than permitted under section 250-5.1-F12A of the code with less setback than required under section 250-5.1-F12B of the code at 1720 Creek Street. The property is currently or formerly owned by Roger and Lenora DeLong and is owned R-1-20, SBL number 123.07-2-1.1. This is application number 22Z-0036.
Okay, can you give us your name and address and then Andres will walk you through it?
Roger DeLong, 1720 Creek Street. Thank you.
Okay, so from what I understand, you submitted a permit, everything went through, and then when it came to time for final inspection, the code enforcement guy saw it and said, this doesn't look like it's exactly as we thought it was going to be. I guess this is a short answer, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Those drawings that you had on there, one, they're very nice, well done. Were those part of your permit application when you put them in so they knew what the, you know, structure was going to look like?
Yes, I believe.
Okay, I was just checking in terms of if that was laid out, because that's, you know, I see that and you go, okay, that's, you can kind of tell exactly what it is right there.
I drew that.
Yeah, it's, well done.
Thanks.
Well done. So, basically, you applied for, or the application said it was going to be a 16 by 20, which is a 320 square foot shed, but depicted is actually a 480 square foot shed, I guess, by the way, we see it in terms of the town sees the size of it. And it's a very nicely built shed, too.
I think the enclosed area is 320.
Yep.
And allowed, on the final iteration, it was allowing, only allowing 300 square feet.
Sounds about right.
Okay, because I took it as that the overhang is now, what the question is, is the overhang became larger and so now it's considered a 480 square foot shed where...
Okay.
And so now what happens is, when it turned to 480, now the size of the shed compared to the size of the property has to be farther away from the, you know, from the side setback, so now we need the side variance, which used to be 10 foot, you had it at 13, so you're already going to be farther away, but now that it's bigger, it has to be 50 feet.
Well, the problem with that is the lot's 90 feet wide.
And that's where I was going to get to next. It's difficult to place this really anywhere you would need to, to be within 50 foot for a side yard setback.
It wouldn't be able to be done without a variance.
Correct. So there's that aspect, and so that's what brings you here for a variance?
Yes.
I, in terms of, you know, issues with your neighbors, things like that, have there been any, you know, talk or anything like that in terms of any issues with where it sits right now, is, any complaints?
No, nothing negative.
Okay, only positive?
Any what?
Only positive?
So far, yes.
That's good, that's good. As we discussed, there's really no other means on where this could sit for the size of it in terms of to be within 50 foot setback from your side yard, because it's a 90-foot parcel for the width and you need basically 100 feet to be right in the center, and you can't even do that.
Yeah, I had some pictures showing the effect of the shed on neighbors, I don't know if those are worth doing. This is 19, it's 27 Bunker Hill, I believe the owners are here, Rick and Sue. Next one down the hill, that's two houses away, that's what it looks, this is what it looks like from the shed. All right, go back. That's their neighbor next door to us, 19 Bunker Hill. And then that's 11 Bunker Hill. There's their corner lot, 1716 Bunker, Creek Street. And then that's our house, 1720. And our next-door neighbor, 1724, Joe and Karen Ryan, Karen's here with us. And two houses away, through those trees, is 1728, Eric and his wife.
Nice, very thorough, thank you.
I didn't want to change the character of the neighborhood.
You really hit the whole neighborhood here, this is like the setup.
Well, these guys helped with giving me the idea that you wanted something that's not going to change the character of the neighborhood in any...
That's actually one of the, that's one of the points, yes, yes, thank you. So from the looks of it, you know, we've got a wooded area and we've got this, I guess, almost cabin-looking shed, it almost looks like it comes out of, you know, with the roof line there, almost looks like it comes out of a little, you know, Petress Storybook-type thing. So it's, I think it's within character in terms of what it looks like, it looks really nice there.
Thank you.
Whether the shed was this size or smaller, the impact on the environmentals and the neighbors, I don't see any issues with that, I don't know if there's anything that you've seen or heard of from the neighbors of, you know, concern for the size of it?
No, no.
Okay, and while this was self-created, I guess, since you followed all the procedures and got your permits, and it just was an oversight in terms of, you know, the size of what was allowed there versus what was actually built?
Yeah, I tried to follow the, as written, but they're quite confusing and it's amazing how...
It's amazing when you work with government how well things are.
But Heidi and her group were all very good, but it, the rules were, the first one I heard was, it's 42,000 square feet yard, you're allowed 10%, you can have 42, you know, 420 feet. Well, it's slightly less than an acre, so that's not true, actually, there's a different percentage, so that's what I applied under and it was accepted under. And then, a couple of things came out afterwards, like, well, you have this attached, this extended porch roof, I didn't see anything in the permit, in the regulations about that, I'm talking about the chapter 250. And that's, I could build a pavilion out there and there's no rules on it.
Right.
Unless it's attached to a building. There was nothing in here about that, so how we keep up with the rules, I don't know, but Heidi does a good job with it.
I think that, yeah, I think we have a pretty good staff here, if you call, they're really good with giving answers and answering questions, so I think that's one of the things we've heard.
I found that, yes.
That's good. That's all I've got for questions.
All right, any other questions from the board?
No.
Can I just pipe in?
Oh, boy.
Yeah. Thank you very much for coming in. I apologize for the oversight, it is a beautiful structure, it really is. Thank you. Beautiful she shed, is that what you're using it for?
Yeah, that's kind of happening.
Did you build it yourself?
Yes.
That's kind of happening.
And is she looking for somebody to build you one?
Oh, no, no, I've got, I've got too many things I need to build, so that's fine, yeah.
All right.
Perfect.
Yeah, I don't, nobody on the phone, nobody electronically, anybody in the audience care to speak about this?
We think it's bad.
All right, come on up. You want to come up and be on television, come on right up.
But if someone wanted to call, they would call 340-8771.
Yes, that is true.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Monzinski, I live at 27 Bunker Hill, our property backs up to his. From my backyard, I can literally see nine different sheds in different yards, four of which are literally falling down. Roger's is beautiful, and watching him put it up was amazing, so I, we totally approve of this shed.
Okay, maybe we have your name and address?
Suzanne Monzinski, 27 Bunker Hill Drive.
Great, thanks a lot. Nice of you to come.
Thank you.
Did you want to come up and say the same thing?
Sure.
Why not?
Say the same thing I said before.
Yeah, that's okay. If we could have your name as well, please.
Karen Ryan, 1724 Creek Street, one of the sheds that needs to be replaced in the area. We're hoping to get a miniature version of this at some point, but it really is fabulous, it hasn't impacted any of the people around us, it's only made the properties better, hasn't affected the wildlife, everyone's happy.
Great.
It's really fabulous, you did a great job.
Well, again, thanks for coming in. Anyone else?
Roger, are you hiring out your services?
Yes. Okay, well, then I think we can move forward with the seeker.
I'm going to move this to type 2 action, requiring no further review, second.
All right, motion by Andres, second by Matt, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And now the merits?
So let's see, on the merits, I, it's pretty straightforward here, he followed all the rules, went through all the steps, and I guess it was an oversight in terms of what's the size that's allowed versus what was, you know, thought was going to be put on there, so the variance has changed in terms of the setbacks, things like that. In terms of how it would impact the site, it probably wouldn't change the site at all if it was smaller or a little bit larger than this, just in terms of the size of the site, it's a narrow lot, so it actually can't be put on the lot as it's built right now. So there is no other feasible way to have this shed on the lot. There were no inverse environmental effects identified, while it was self-created, he did go through all the steps with the permitting process, and it was caught at the very last moment. So with that, I'm going to move to approve the, we're doing a larger accessory storage building and the side setback variance.
I will second that, both. Any further discussion? Okay, so we have a motion to approve for the reasons stated by Andres, and I have seconded that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, thanks, everyone. All right, next.
Andrew Holtz, 211 Harwood Circle, Rochester, New York, 14625. Requests approval for an area variance under section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a deck pergola with less front setback than required under section 250-5.1-F1 of the code at 211 Harwood Circle. The property is currently or formerly owned by Andrew and Alicia Holtz and is owned R-1-20, SBL number 123.08-2-87. This is application number 22Z-0038.
Okay, if we can have your names and address and then we'll walk you through it.
Andrew Holtz, 211 Harwood Circle, Rochester, New York.
And Alicia Holtz, same address.
Okay, thanks.
Well, thank you guys for coming in, the, appreciate the completeness of the information as well. Got a couple of questions for you guys, I do understand that you are adding a porch to the front of your home with the expectation of being able to have gathering set out front, kind of, as I recall, the term was make some memories, so. I did a couple of questions around, will there be any lighting on it that would be in the direction of the road or?
No.
Okay. And can you give kind of a little overview besides making memories about how you'll actually use the porch?
No, the kids like to play out front, so hoping to sit out there and watch them, there's no place to put chairs really on our front stoop right now.
Yeah, we have a six-year-old and a four-year-old who have a construction site out front, so lots of coming and going, digging, so we need a place to kind of, you know, home base out there.
Yeah, keep an eye on it, yeah, for sure. And I know this question's going to sound, based on looking at the property, but is there any other location on the residence you could put the porch?
Not that would be sensible, no, and you can see the front door right there and a rock garden right next to it, which the kids have enjoyed, but...
Yeah, I figured that would be the answer, just, you know, we always ask if there was another alternative to it. And as the, will you be blending it into the house so that it matches the look and the feel?
Yep, we're hoping to match the wood trim that's on the shutters right now.
Excellent. And I'm assuming that the, taking a look, I took a quick drive through the neighborhood, so it didn't seem like the porch would be out of character for the rest of the neighborhood. Did you get any feedback from any of your other neighbors that they would be opposed to you adding the porch to the...
No, we're fairly new to the neighborhood, we moved in September 1st of last year. We've made friends with a few of the neighbors so far, been overwhelmingly supportive of the project, so, and they probably put us more in character with the neighborhood. A few other neighbors have, you know, really nice front porches, they are out there quite frequently and we don't.
Yeah, so I did note that all the residences there seem to be right at the, the houses are right at the 50 foot, so you really don't have an option, you're going to have to ask for a variance if you're going to put the porch out.
No matter what.
Yeah, no matter what, so I did know that. I don't have any additional questions?
Okay, anybody else from the board have questions? We did receive, it looks like emails, I think, from two neighbors, both in support, let's see, Nate and Claire Verdic and Adam and Megan Cormack, so...
Really nice emails, they were very complimentary.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a good neighborhood, for sure.
And you took my steam away, I was going to do that under merits now.
Oh, geez, okay, well, sorry about that.
But I appreciate that you've occupied this house, because I know that that was vacant time.
We heard some stories about it.
It's got some history, yeah.
So I'm glad that it's occupied by good people.
Thank you.
Nice. I don't see any phone calls or electronic submissions, anyone in the audience care to speak about this? Okay, let's proceed with the seeker.
And regards to seeker, I would move to make this a type 2, requiring no further review.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have George with the seeker motion, Andres with the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And on the merits?
Well, this would certainly blend in with the rest of the neighborhood, it would provide them an area to have a view of the children during their outdoor activities and allow them to make, I'm going to use the term make memories, because it stuck out to me that you wrote that and what, you wanted to make some memories. It would certainly, again, be in keeping with the neighborhood, they're kind of at a disadvantage because the house itself is already at the 50-foot mark, so anything that they do, they're going to need a variance for, but I don't think this should be impactful at all, it's not a large variance. So, based on that and the fact that you've got feedback from two of the neighbors that they, they're, you know, in agreement that this would, you know, add character and value to the properties, I would, I would move to approve.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve by George for the reasons stated and a second by Laura, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Number five.
William and Pamela Arring, 1961 Harris Road, Penfield, New York, 14526. Request approval for an area variance under section 250-14.3 of the code to allow an accessory storage building with less setback than required under section 250-5.1-F12B of the code at 1961 Harris Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by William and Pamela Arring and is owned RA-2, SBL number 125.04-1-2.131. This is application number 22Z-0039.
Okay, thanks Andy, if we could have your names and address?
Bill Arring, 1961 Harris Road.
Pamela Arring, 1961 Harris Road.
Okay, thanks.
Good evening.
Hi.
Thank you. So I'm going to jump into, I guess, the only negative part that I see. You have 6.78 acres, which is a lot of acreage, so you couldn't find a place... 6.78 acres, which is a lot of acreage, so you couldn't find a place within that where you wouldn't need the variance for this?
The problem with the property is there's a drainage swale right in the middle, so where we would have to go would be way in the back, almost, and actually, the drainage swale follows the driveway and goes back. And then that tree line that you were just pointing at is probably way back there. But that entire area where we could get the distance also floods every spring and fall.
Gotcha. Okay. And what are you planning on using the accessory building for?
It's a storage shed for all the stuff that we need to maintain that size of lot, so lawn mower, UTV.
Toys.
No Mustangs?
No Mustangs in this one, no.
Yeah.
I wish.
And obviously, it's a bit smaller than what is allowed under code, so you're not looking for a variance for that. The materials, what is it going to be constructed out of?
It's a standard pole barn, so, let's see what he gave me here. Metal roof, 29 gauge, metal siding, 29 gauge. It's got a couple of garage doors on it.
And you live in an area where pole barns are quite common, right?
There's six of them within a half mile in either distance, and a lot of them are on area variance as well.
Yep. And are you going to be using or running any electricity or anything, any plumbing?
We're going to run electricity to it, no plumbing.
And is there going to be exterior lighting?
There's going to be one light, but it's going to be facing towards our house.
Okay. So, and then you already have a building there, and in your application, it said that you're going to be removing that?
Right, that one's actually falling apart, so that's why we wanted to...
So obviously, you wouldn't mind if we make a condition of the approval of this, a condition that you take that down?
Correct, not a problem.
And I actually believe that we have, yeah, we had at least one, three, or two, two public comments in support of this, of this application. That's not a question, I'm just noting that.
Yep, no problem.
I have nothing else.
Anything else from the board? Again, no electronic concerns or questions and nobody on the phone, so I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience to speak about this? No? Okay, let's go ahead then with seeker.
We'd make a motion to declare this a Type 2 action, requiring no further review.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Matt, second by Andres. All those in favor?
Aye.
For the merits, I'd make a motion to approve it. I understand why they're putting it where it is. I understand why they want it. They live on Harris Road. There's so many pole barns in the area, so it's definitely not going to be an undesirable change to the neighborhood. It's not substantial. I mean, I know that it's a 50 percent variance that they're looking for, but it's a big lot and a smaller building than they could have built. So I don't think that this is a very substantial variance. It's not going to have any adverse effects on the neighborhood at all, and it's self-created, but I'm not putting any weight on that, so I'd make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to approve by Matt, second by George. Any further discussion amongst the board? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I did notice your smirk when they talked about the other sheds that were falling down. I said, oh, there's a story there.
Yes, ours is collapsing.
Thank you.
Have a good night. All right, number six.
David Milliken, 61 Twilight Drive, Rochester, New York, 14617. Request approval for an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a deck porch with less front setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F1 of the code at 63 Beacon Hills Drive North. The property is currently or formerly owned by Christine M. Coon and David S. Milliken, sorry about that, and is owned PD, SBL number 109.05-2-19. This is application number 22Z-0040.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If we could just have your name and address, and then Andres will walk you through it.
David Milliken, 61 Twilight Drive, Rochester, New York.
Thank you. One question for Andy, actually. No matter what's built on the front of this house requires a variance, including the existing deck that's there would have required a variance.
Right.
To even step into the house, you would need something to step up would require a variance.
The front of the house is essentially right at the front setback line, so...
So basically, no matter what we have in the front, we can have a three and a half inch step, and that's it? That's pretty accurate, okay. So currently, we have a four-foot deck that sticks out the front to step into the home from the front. Is that correct?
That's a makeshift. The original porch was a five-by-eight-foot concrete slab.
Okay.
That is no longer there. It's crumbled. It was a hazard. I had to do some getting in and out, access in and out of the house.
Yep.
So I effectively pulled that out. Now, I did put a couple of blocks up there and a piece of plywood so people could get up and out of there. That's about the extent of it.
Okay, all right. But there was, you know, in a sense, there was something there prior.
Correct, yes.
And it just became deteriorated, and we're at the point now where we need to replace it, and...
Yeah, the support blocks that were holding up that, it was, you know, probably a five-inch concrete slab, which measured four by eight feet.
Okay.
And the, there's water damage over there and it deteriorated and just fell into
oblivion. Makes sense. Yeah, yeah. And the reason you probably want to go a little bit bigger is because when you swing a 36-inch storm door out, you needed some space to actually stand up on there when you open it and not have to step off the step to get in as well, correct?
Yes, correct. In addition to, I thought it'd be nice to have a little more space to have a couple of chairs, so that, you know, explains the width of it. I essentially modeled it after, to some extent, from the property. It's not directly across the street, but diagonally, and I walked over to the neighbor and I asked him if I could tape his porch out, and he said, sure.
So one might say with that decision, this would be in character with the neighborhood.
100%, just keep swinging one more. That's the one there. That's an old picture, but...
Well, Google hasn't quite caught up with that one yet.
But yeah, that's...
It's 2012, it looks like.
Yeah, that is, that is the property, but...
Okay.
Yeah.
But nicer than that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So in a sense, what you're looking for is to do something with what your neighbor currently has, you know, modeling it after one of the other properties there, so it would be in character with the neighborhood. You're looking at basically go 18 inches farther than what you currently have, so it would be five and a half feet closer to the road from the front of the house.
Correct.
Or 18-inch difference from what it currently was about.
Yeah, I guess one of was, the, this original slab was four or five feet.
Yeah, I think right now it says four is what we're looking at, and we're looking to go five and a half.
Could be right, yeah. But five and a half is the number that we're looking at.
Perfect.
And I, we submitted an application for a building permit for that specific deck.
Okay.
Which laid out all the materials. It's going to be a composite Trex deck with a nice rail system and so forth and so on.
Do we need to double-check the size? No, I'm just kidding. Too soon.
Yep.
So basically...
Wait until the cameras are off.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't have any...
And the mics.
I don't have any other questions.
All right. Any other questions from the board on this?
No.
And once again, no call-ins, no electronic submissions, so I'll ask anyone in the audience. Come right up.
Hi.
I'm Adele Shepherd. I live at 15 Brain Tree Crescent. I stopped by the other night when I saw somebody at the house because I had received this notice, and there's a notice posted outside.
Right.
I have lived here since 1990 and have been driving past this house since then, and I am so happy to see it being reborn because it was pretty sad. And I think the idea of a nice little deck there would be very enhancing. And remember, this is, the photograph doesn't show that this is on quite a slope, and so that the distance you're talking about is really measured differently because it's going downhill. And I'm delighted that it's being reborn and turning into a beautiful location, and I hope you will approve because the warmth of a, of a nice little deck porch out front is welcoming, and its position on the hill is such that it would give a vantage point. Whoever sits out there would have a lovely view looking around Beacon Hills Drive North.
Great.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right, anybody else in the audience?
I would just like to say thank you for purchasing that property as well. That was another property that...
Yeah, that was a beauty.
The neighbors were less than satisfied.
Okay. All right, well, then let's proceed with the seeker review, please.
Okay, this is a Type 2 action, requiring no further review.
Second.
All right, Matt?
Matt.
Right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
And on the merits?
On the merits, so we will be making an improvement from what is currently there by adding 18 more inches to the front of the existing size of what's there right now. And in reality, no matter what you put on the front of that house requires some kind of variance because the house was set with a front door that required a step without a step being able to go into it, I guess, by code. So I guess planned development works well.
Ooh.
Yeah, right twice.
Not me.
Not, well, not you, no, no, no. But it's just ironic that something like that would happen.
Be a two in one night.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's not going, you know, it's going to be in character. He's modeling it actually after one of the other properties diagonal from his home. The variance isn't really substantial. There shouldn't be any environmental impacts from this, from what we see. If anything, it's going to be an improvement. So with that, I'll move to approve.
Second.
All right, a motion to approve by Andres with the, for the factors stated, second by Laura. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Good luck. Thank you all for coming.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Good meeting tonight in terms of neighbor input.
Yeah.
We certainly appreciate that. So that was the last hearing, so we will stand adjourned till the next meeting, whenever that is, but have a wonderful Fourth of July in the meantime.
You, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.